In that case, I am going to be left our closed session and adjourn that. We are now back to open session. Adam, do you have a report to make on our closed session?
Adam's joining. Just give him a moment to get off of mute. There he is.
Sure, Adam, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. This evening, the City Council met in closed session at 4:00 PM to consider one item of potential litigation. The council took no reportable action on that item, but we would share with the public that the subject of that item is not any land use project in the city of Rancho Cordova.
Yeah, just to clarify, that that item had nothing to do with land use. And Cyrus, I think you may have done some inquiries on that point today. And if I'm not mistaken, you clarified it with people who are contacting us about that land use item. You might want to just restate how they could best track that that issue at this point.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had an inquiry for at least two residents asking if the closed session that we had planned for today and the prior week was in any way related to the development, CASIS property development. And I made them aware that that is not the topic or subject of any litigation. It was not the topic of any conversation in closed session with the City Council.
Okay, I can't be part of any discussions on that project anyway because I live too close to it. But I hope that clarifies for anybody who was concerned about that. So I'm going to call this meeting to order, the regular meeting, and ask that the city clerk please call them all.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Thank you.
There we go.
Councilmember McGarvey will be joining us in a moment. I don't see that he has joined yet, but I have spoken with him, so he will be joining us soon. Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Sander?
Here. And let's see, item seven, Madam Clerk, if you could read the Metro Cable TV television announcement, please.
The meaning of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Sunday, September 13th at 9:00 AM and Wednesday, September 16th at 6:00 PM. A DVD copy is available for anyone from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right, very good. We are on time to make the Pledge of Allegiance. Linda, I'm going to ask you to attempt to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We are all... That's perfect. How did I know that? We can pledge to Linda's flag, or I've got one sitting on my desk. Please do your best to show appropriate respect, stand if you if you will. But in any case, Linda, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, David. Ladies and gentlemen, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I would ask that we have a moment of silence and move an invicator. We do not have an invocation tonight, but please join me in a moment of silence. We could remember at this particular time, as we look in the environment around us, the number of homes or lives and property that are threatened by fires in our state. So just a moment of silence on that behalf. Okay, thank you all very much. We are going to go on to presentations, and I think Brenda, our Human Resources Manager, is up.
Brenda's joining in just a moment.
Right. There you are, Brenda.
Hello?
And there's the ceiling of your office.
Yeah? So, there we go. So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Brenda Roach. I'm the Human Resources Manager for the city. Tonight, I am here to recognize three staff members who have reached 10 and 15 years of service milestones with the city. As an organization, we feel it is important to recognize our employees as they reach these significant milestones and for our employees to know how we truly value their loyalty, dedication, and commitment to our community. We have invited these three individuals to join us today and be recognized for their outstanding achievements. As I call your names, can you please identify yourself and wave on Zoom? I would like to note that the City Manager Cyrus will be personally delivering your Service Award recognition certificates to you in person individually this week.
Is there appropriate social distancing?
Yes, adhering to social distancing protocol that we have here at the city. And for our award receivants, feel free to add any comments after I call your names. So the first person I'd like to recognize is Kavang, for 10 years of service as an administrative assistant with the city.
Ah, welcome. Do you have a speech gained from such a long employment with the city?
Good evening. I'm excited. I'm truly excited. Been here for 10 years. The city has grown a lot since the 10 years I've worked in the city, and I'm just excited just to make five, 10 years as well.
All right, very good. Thank you, and we honor your your service.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Michelle Mingay as the Senior Finance Analyst for the city. She is also celebrating 10 years of service.
Michelle is joining. I can see she's unmuted, and Bob has just joined us as well.
I think Michelle is a little shy, but I'm also going to ask her, in her 10 years of service, if she gained any wisdom she'd like to to share with us.
Michelle, are you there?
All right, the technology gremlins might be at play here.
They are.
If you... Bob, welcome, Bob. Michelle, if you can get in a little bit, we'll keep this item open for a little bit. Brenda, do you have additional?
Yes, and lastly, I'd like to recognize our Public Works Director, Albert Stricker, for 15 years of service with the city.
Wonderful.
And we have Albert here in the audience at the City Council meeting, so to determine...
Oh, there he is in person. Excellent. Now, Albert, same opportunity to you. Do you have words of wisdom to share with us based on your 15 years of service to our community?
Just to thank you and retrospect, it's really incredible to everything you hoped for in a job, to have that realized. It's just been an honor to get to serve this community and serve this City Council and see how the how the community has grown over time. It's and to be able to have an opportunity to live here and be a part of that has been just everything I hoped for in coming coming to work for the city of Rancho Cordova. It's been a wonderful 15 years and working with all of my colleagues. We have an incredible staff here that is just really fun to work with, and I can't imagine a more supportive boss than Cyrus Abhar has just been really a pleasure to work for. And I just thank you for having me at the city for these 15 years. It's really been an honor. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Albert.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just make a few comments here. The three individuals that were recognized tonight, I've had the pleasure of working with all three of them over the years. Kavang started as one of our customer service representatives, and she worked in building and safety, and now she is an admin assistant with our community development. And she has done exemplary work for the city. She's been here for a long time and a great deal of growth that she has gone through. Michelle Mingay, who is our Senior Finance Analyst, plays an important and critical role in our finance department. She works very closely with our CFDs and community facilities districts with the work that we do with development and doing the finance plan. And she has also has had many years, 10 years of dedicated service to the city, and it's been a pleasure to work with. And of course, you know, Albert, having joined us as a senior engineer, as an engineer in our Public Works Department and growing over time to be our Public Works Director, he's one of the most innovative and one of the great thinkers we have in the organization. And so pleased and so proud to have these three employees as part of our team and their long-term dedication to this community and to this city. And great appreciation for the work they do and a heartfelt thanks to their commitment to the community.
Michelle has just joined us by phone, so Michelle, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Brenda, would you like to reintroduce, Michelle?
So I would like to recognize Michelle Mingay for her 10 years of service, serving as the Senior Finance Analyst for the city of Rancho Cordova. Michelle, would you like to add any words of wisdom to share?
I just want to thank the city team. They're a family. It has been a short, fast 10 years, if that makes any sense. I continue to learn and grow, and I'm just excited for the opportunity that I have had at the city of Rancho Cordova.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, we honor your service.
And that concludes our presentation.
All right, thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Cyrus. Well said, all around. We are served by very able staff in the city of Rancho Cordova, and it's to all of our benefit and our residents' benefit. Okay, we are on to item number 11 on our agenda, public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. That's if you're in the room. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to a podium by the mayor, me, at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less, to state their name and community of residence. And of course, under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be determined to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action of those after the posting of the agenda. I will say there are additional ways to comment, either through Zoom or via phone. They are posted at the beginning of our agenda. If I am not mistaken, the other means of making a comment, if you're in Zoom, you can raise your hand, and our city clerk will alert me as to those comments. But our tradition now is that we start with those in the room. And so Stacy, how many public comments do we have?
I have four public comments for items not on the agenda, and I believe, given what has been written on their cards, they're all related to CASIS, if that...
Okay, in that case, Garrett, as Vice Mayor, I'd like you to run this part of the meeting. I'm going to recuse myself during these public comments. If we run out of topic, if we run out of that topic, I will return. I have a conflict on that item, and so someone else should probably manage the public comment. Thank you. All right, Stacy, go ahead.
Okay. We have four public comments, starting with Sergio Diaz. Following Sergio will be Lauren Peterson. Following Lauren will be Helen, and then following Helen will be Mark Berry. You'll each have three minutes. Sergio, if you'd like to come forward, you're very welcome.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm here to reiterate my opposition to the CASIS development as proposed and reserve my comments for later. Thank you so much.
Second speaker is Lauren Peterson. You'll have three minutes as well.
Yes, thank you for this time. I'm here really just to register my opposition to the CASIS development as it's currently proposed, and then I'll wait for others to fill in. Thank you.
The third speaker is Helen Bouchard.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of the council. When I moved into my house in 1983, there was a field across the street from me that was vacant, and the road to which was then Gady Park was a levee road. See the picture? The picture up there? As you can see, there's an open field, and there's a levee road going into the park. I was aware that someday both would be developed. When the developments started in the field in front of my house, I was thrilled to see the old farmhouse there was left standing. What really impressed me was the types of homes US Homes was building. This is a subdivision under construction. What really impressed me was the type of homes the US Homes built in the subdivision. In 19... In 2005, I was fortunate when my new neighbor started to build on the vacant lot across from my house. This is a lot. And you note there is an easement used to use the river.
Helen, those who are joining via Zoom can't see, so we'll have to put them in front of the camera in front of you.
Where's the camera? This? We are ticking away, guys.
We'll give you more seconds. Okay, we're doing that.
Get the picture?
They're seeing it.
They're seeing it? Okay. We, as a community, are not fortunate with the TruMark builder. TruMark has not learned from prior meetings of the importance of the American River and the richness of the heritage orchard and the river. The river is famous for the fishing. I have talked to fishermen that come from other countries and parks across from my house to go fishing in the river adjacent to the orchard. My major concern is TruMark wants to backfill with soil from the upper portion of the subdivision of the project. This house, Z Anderson's house, this house sits high above the orchard. You can see the retaining walls. What will TruMark do to secure the banks that protect this house? What would they do to protect the 60-foot oak tree in the Papasus property that cannot withstand five feet of dirt surrounding it? These are a few of my concerns, as I've expressed many. In 1986, we had snow and rain. There's the snow. And we had the rain. In addition, there was devastation in the park. As you can see from these pictures, there is nothing but dirt. The flooding was so bad in 86 that it... There was nothing but dirt. You walked there and you thought you were going through a muddy field, something like you would see at Folsom Lake. In addition, I took pictures from the CASIS property of what the water in the river looked like after it had already started to secede. I unfortunately did not take pictures of the wet ground in the orchard, so this is proof that there can be water standing in that river. At the end of the day, my concern is for our coyote friend, that she has a place to live. Thank you for your time. I am opposed to the TruMark subdivision DD 9865 as presented. Any improvements to the CASIS property need to have a balance to protect the heritage orchard and our wildlife habitat. Thank you for your time.
Our next public speaker will be Mark Berry.
Cyrus, how you doing? Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I just want to point out a couple of things. You know, the... On the end of things from TruMark and the representation to the members of the community, you know, I didn't receive any notice about this development. You know, the first thing I heard about it was there was going to be some meeting about the project on August 5th, and there was a letter sent out. So I got one of my neighbors to give me the letter. The letter's dated July 24th. TruMark doesn't manage to drop it in the mailbox until July 31st in the PM on a Friday. It doesn't arrive to my neighbor until August 3rd for a meeting of substantial import to me and the community that occurred on August 5th. It's very disappointing, the lack of notice, but then even attending the meetings, it just seemed as though we weren't getting the straight scoop on things, or at least the TruMark was somewhat uninformed. They didn't have the street names right. They would say the wrong compass directions and giving us indications of where things were in their plot maps. And then, you know, they refer to the American River Parkway as the American River Complex. These might sound like minor things, but this company's supposed to have been looking at this for two years. They also represented to us that, you know, or made the inference that this was close to a metro station, that it was a transit-oriented development. Well, when you look into the regulations on that, it has to be within a quarter mile. It barely touches, barely touches the quarter mile designation for the higher density that that answer was addressed to. It's not like they were being forthright to us. It really is not some sort of transit-oriented development. TruMark also said that when the question of density arose that, oh, you know, it could be 400 units here, but you're only getting 250. You know, it could be worse, as though they were trying to scare us into this this development. Well, I asked planning, and they say, we do not have plans or documents related to a 400-unit development on the CASIS property. So we feel like we're just not getting the straight scoop with regard to what's going on there. Question about what's happening in the lower basin of the property that's in the floodplain. They said they were going to raise it up, okay, but they did not say that they were collapsing the upper plateau, okay, which has midden soil and cultural significance into the lower basin floodplain, which will cause drainage problems. So soon, there's other issues, but there's a 50-foot-wide pedestrian easement there. There's no mention of that being disappearing, but there's only a 15-foot pedestrian easement that they're referencing. So soon, there's going to be an environmental document. We're supposed to have 30 days to respond to that. Well, I think that's unfair for us to be forced to hire a bunch of experts to ferret all this out, just unfair to the community. And so what I'm asking is that at least especially for the lower basin, that you insist upon an environmental impact report. Okay, we're not just not getting all the information, and I don't know that the city is either. Thank you.
Thank you. That wraps up the public comment for no items on the agenda in the room, but I believe...
Stacy, I have a question that I'd like to have the city attorney address.
Okay.
Because we've gotten a lot of emails and a lot of comments about this. One, this isn't Tim's. But Adam, could you speak to the role of City Councilmembers as magistrate when it comes to deciding on planning items like this? And I guess, and the danger of council members expressing their views prior to public hearings on a specific item such as this?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
The council acts in general in a couple different legal capacities. One is as decision makers, where you're creating new laws. The other is where you're applying the existing laws to particular sets of facts and circumstances. And when you... And on development projects such as this, you're taking some of your actions in that second capacity. And so when you act in that second capacity, people have due process rights, people have a right to a hearing, people have a right to participate, and they have a right to know that you're making your decisions based upon the facts and circumstances that the public's aware of. And so it is important for you to not make all those decisions, to not make those decisions until you actually have the information, and we haven't prepared that information. So yes, the council's just considering something on a development project like a rezoning or general plan amendment, that's one thing. But here, on the CASIS project and on many of our other projects that come before you for development projects, there's some things that you shouldn't make final decisions on until you actually have everything in front of you later on in the process. Does that address your concerns?
That's us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have one additional public comment in Zoom, and I don't know if this item is related to CASIS, so I'm going to unmute them to connect with them and find out if we should join the mayor first or after their comment.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes. Is your item related to CASIS?
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Debbie Cortez. I have been a member of the Rancho Cordova community for 23 years, and my kids have all been raised here, and I am very involved in some of the organizations in town, and I'd love living here. I just want to say that I oppose this CASIS community the way they have it proposed, but I do will reserve my comments for later. I just wanted to let you know my opposition to it. That was it.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your comment. I'm going to ask...
All right, go get David.
I just did. David is joining us in just a moment.
Okay, I'm back. Thank you all for that. I apologize having to step out and say, well, simply says if you live too close to a project and you're a council member, you cannot participate in discussions about it. I don't have any financial interest in the project, although presumably its development could influence my home value, I suppose, since I live close. So that's the reason for the recusal and the conflict. All right, that was public comments. Is there any other public comments?
Not that's...
By phone, Zoom?
No.
Nothing else? Okay. That takes care of item number 11. We're gonna move on to item number 12, council reports. And Mr. McGarvey, you are up first.
I don't have too many things. I just, it's confusing to the parents in this whole area about, and I guess much further than that, about how many of their kids are not getting educated. We're having, actually pretty good in Folsom-Cordova. We're gonna have three of our grandkids here at our house. They all have the computers they need to go on and look at them, but it's something I think that's gonna have to be handled better than it is right now. Hopefully, by the end of this year or the spring of next year, we can have a lot of the kids go back to regular schools again, because that really does bother me. Not only the ones we can have, our own kids, grandkids here, but the ones that in the Robert J. McGarvey School and all the others there, all the ones that are being questioned right now. And one other thing is, how many of the kids are gonna be not having a home because of the wildfires? It seems they're getting more rather than putting them out, and that's really scary, especially when you have the firefighters fighting a wildfire and the temperature is 110 degrees. Well, I guess, I don't know how they do it, and my hat's off to all of them. So definitely think about them all the time and hope that they can continue to do the wonderful things they did last night. For instance, the military are able to lift those people who are trapped in a fire area. So hopefully they can keep on doing it, and then hopefully we'll get something that'll like fall weather and some rain to get some of this, some of these wildfires out. I'm really concerned about those. Thank you.
Okay, council members, I would encourage you to keep your videos live. It's a little difficult for me to ascertain whether we have a quorum, if it's blank. Linda stepped away there for a little bit. I heard noise in the background, so I assume you're still in the room listening. You weren't on camera, but it'd be easier if we were on video, then I would know for certain. Thank you, Bob. I'll have a comment to make on distance ed as well. Linda, you're up next.
Thanks, David. Yeah, I just walked around to the other side of the desk, which is on the other side. So yeah, I would follow up Bob's comment with express incredible sympathy for the people who've been devastated by the fires. On our next door, people keep asking about the big Chinooks that the Army Guard is landing and taking off, and now we know they were the ones over there rescuing all those tourists. So we really congratulate the National Guard on that. Regional Transit actually had a meeting last week, I think it was, and I would only say that Regional Transit is working, continuing to work to restore service that was cut when people stopped riding the buses and the trains back in March and April. This is not service that we lost during the route restructuring a year ago, but this is service that simply was not being run because nobody was riding, and so they're working to bring that back. And I just want to let everybody know that Regional Transit is actually the largest provider of these dollar ride services that we now have in town called Smart Ride. They're the largest provider in the country. They have nine different routes, and the number of people riding, you know, calling or texting to get a, to get a ride to somewhere is really growing by leaps and bounds. And so I want to let everybody know that if you, while there's certain areas in Rancho Cordova that this Smart Ride serves, you can get that by going to sacrt.com/smartride. And I've given that to the city clerk so that they can, so that they'll have that information. Also, you can also call 916-556-0100 to reserve a ride or to get it to come and pick you up. And the ride doesn't cost any more than it costs to ride the train. The cost is $2.50 per person or a dollar and a quarter if you are one of the discount-eligible groups of people, such as seniors. And as it turns out, if there's five of you, like five in a family, and you're all going to the same destination, they all ride free. So, you know, what's not to like about that? Smart Ride is not good for everybody. You don't want to call too late to make it to where you need to go if you have a specific-timed appointment. You don't want to take it to work. You don't want to take it to school. For the majority of the people who are using it for everything from groceries to shopping to whatever, it really works out well if people are using it, including in Rancho Cordova. And then finally, I have, we want to close tonight in honor of longtime resident Sandy Klemicki.
Oh.
I know Bob remembers the Klemickis. Frank and Sandy...
Yeah, definitely.
Have been, have been longtime members of Rancho Cordova. They were both in the Air Force and retired here. You know their, you know their children, particularly one of the sons-in-law, who has been involved at the city. Frank and Sandy were well-known, after they retired, as the owners and operators of Cordova Travel, which was on the corner where the college is located now. And they were heavily involved in the chamber. Sandy was involved in what we call the Mather-Rancho Coordinating Committee, which was the senior commanders at Mather and those of us who were president of the Chamber of Commerce or chair of CORPAK or president of community council. So we'd like to adjourn tonight in her honor. Thank you, David.
Very good. Thank you, Linda. That was, that was perfect. Did you say she was a former president of the community council?
Sandy was not, but Frank was definitely a president of the Chamber of Commerce, and Sandy might have been also.
Okay.
In about '78, '79, '80.
All right.
I know we used their travel agency...
They were also involved in Rotary.
Yeah. I used their travel agency to go from here to visit them, and the kids are small, it's really fun.
We all did, Bob. And actually, it was the best-looking building on the boulevard at that point, that pretty little Spanish building with the red tile roof.
Mm-hmm. It was really good. Not, it looks better, but in a different way, with a car.
In a different way. You're absolutely right.
All right, Mr. Terry, you're up next, council report.
Um, I'll keep this fairly brief. I join my colleagues in thanking firefighters and first responders and everybody else that are dealing not only wildfires, but a pandemic at the same time, and suffering through all of that. I would like to share that the council member that represents this city on the air district board to continue to look for or download the Spare the Air app that you can find on your Google and iPhones. Keep track of the air, make sure that you're staying inside when it is unhealthy. Today, I think we were sharing this earlier today amongst our colleagues, the Sacramento testing facility or option, when you're looking at that app, has the PM10 data, which today reached hazardous levels. So that is dust and heavy ash, not just the smoke, which is in the PM2 counts. So if you're looking at Slough House, Folsom, Elgro, a lot of the other ones, it will not show you the PM10 count, so it'll just show you the PM2 and the Folsom, that's all of that testing facility. So if you want to keep track of what the smoke and all of this dust is doing, go check out the Sacramento testing facility or site within the app, and it'll, it'll give you a pretty accurate number. And today, it was very, very unhealthy for people to be outside. So just continue to keep that in mind. It's gonna be that way for probably quite a while until we see rain or at least cooler temperatures and less wind. So everybody, please stay safe, and, you know, let's not add more unhealthy activities to what is already a very dicey situation when it comes to public health. That's it for me.
So Donald, if I can clarify something, just for the public, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you say PM 2.5, that's a, it's a particulate measure, but it's 2.5 micron particles, and they're counting those like in per-million particles of atmosphere?
Yeah, it's, I believe, yeah, it's per, it's parts per million, and so you have sizes, 2.5 milligrams, I believe, it's the actual size.
It's the diameter?
Yes, the diameter, excuse me. So a human hair is 50, I believe, so we're talking 10 and 2.5. And so when you're going to look at like today, when there's ash in the air, when there's lots of dust in the air from the wind, that is mostly PM10. 2.5 is mainly gonna be smoke or smaller items that are actually even more harmful because they're smaller and they can be adjusted further in. This is, PM10 is about, PM10 is at the point where you're seeing lots of stuff and you can taste it, and you can smell it more. And so in, a couple of weeks ago, when we, or the last couple of weeks, we've been watching PM2 counts, that's mainly gonna be smoke. You can smell it, you can see it, maybe you don't taste it, but you're also not seeing it actually like land on your car. That's gonna be the ash and the dust and everything else that's actually hitting your car. So I have a black car, and it doesn't look black right now, even though I got it cleaned like three hours ago, four hours ago. That's your PM10, and that today got really, really bad.
And the third thing we worry about is ozone, and all these have to do with how healthy they are for your lungs. So the smaller particles get further in, and ozone, of course, is way, way smaller than 2.5, but it's also potentially dangerous for lungs.
And traditionally, when there's not fires, this time of year, very hot days, we're really worried about ozone.
Right, right.
That is normally the worst threat that we have to our clean air. It's very, very hot days, and ozone gets really, really high, and you shouldn't be inside. That's usually what these forecasts, that you'll see for the daily forecast this time of year, they're forecasting ozone. And the air district has had to switch to doing forecasts on all of these things, sometimes more than once a day, I'm seeing. So I'm trying to forward those out to my colleagues as often as possible. But check the air district's website, check that, get that app, keep it on your phone, keep an eye on it. I just want to reiterate then, though, that this time, this time of year and what's going on right now, make sure you're watching that PM10, because the PM 2.5 number was like unhealthy for sensitive groups at one point, but that PM10 was still hazardous for everybody. And that's about as bad as it can get. And it's one of the highest readings I've ever seen in my life, since I've been on, since I've been on that board and paying attention to this type of stuff, so.
So I don't mean to pitch on the spot here, but the Purple Air references that I'm seeing, I mean, there's a lot of those monitors, and some of them are deployed in people's backyards, basically. You can go online and buy one. Actually, Heather, she should contact me. She may or may not, the individual may or may not have a lung condition, but in any case, is very concerned about the Purple Air reports. And I understand they detect PM10, PM 2.5, but not ozone, if I'm reading that properly. But the interesting thing was, there's almost none of those sensors in Rancho Cordova. And their suggestion to me was that, you know, maybe the city should, because they cost something like $250 apiece, and people literally put them in their backyard, hang them up, connect it to your Wi-Fi, and you're on the Purple Air network. Their suggestion was, what if the city sponsored a few, you know, in neighborhoods? I thought that actually makes sense. Cyrus can do it under his authority. Everyone's watching air quality. This fire stuff's gonna go on for months, likely.
Hold on, maybe I...
I thought that might be a simple thing we could do in response.
Um, let's offline and talk about that with the air district. My only concern there is creating some sort of network where residents are looking somewhere else for certain stuff when our kind of collective app and monitoring system for the region or for the county is in one place. So, you know, I guess my only concern is sometimes more, less is more in some ways, just making sure that, you know, businesses know where they should be looking, I guess. But I'd be happy to explore and see if that's something that we can work with the air district.
I know the air quality district has a limited number of highly sensitive, highly specialized sites that are way more than $250 installations.
A million dollars.
But there's none like close to Rancho Cordova, so it's always sort of like a guess of what's here versus...
Yeah.
...or the airports or downtown.
Yeah, over the years, I've had that question a whole bunch of times. Where they are really, it's kind of the same issue that we have about like cityhooded, like where the school districts are, right? They deploy these based on topography and where they are in relationship to the other one, so it's not necessarily that Rancho doesn't have one. We have, there's one Slough House, right, that's, you know, how many hundreds of feet away from Rancho Cordova. And then we have ones that are in Sacramento, and then we have ones that are on Highlands and Folsom and other places, so they're deploying on a county basis to get that. So I, I've had this question before, and I mean, scientifically, they put them where they put them.
Okay.
To best judge for the entire county, the health of the air. But I'd be interested, I'd be willing, I mean, maybe this is a measure of age for us to actually look at how we could deploy something that assists the city. I know we got some additional state funding from CARB, mainly around Highway 99, because of elevated levels there and elevated levels of poverty and a lot of other things, that use Cal and BiRAS screens to decide where new sites were gonna go and where some additional technology was gonna go. And that site was picked and recommended by the air district because of sensitivity and some of the other things. But that's, that was, a lot of these, though, it really comes down to federal funding, state funding, and then, and then the science behind how far and where you really want them, depending on what you're trying to measure. But, but I'd be interested in exploring additional conversations on that.
All right.
But I've definitely had that question in eight years on the council. Whenever this starts to happen, and you get the question, why don't we have, you know, a testing facility here? It really comes down to, you know, we're surrounded by the other ones, and so putting one here is redundant to the system.
Do they have it at Mather?
Yeah, well, they could, but the question would be, does it make more sense to have it at Mather to have it at Slough House? And the scientists will tell you, it makes more sense to have it at Slough House, based on a whole bunch of answers that I've gotten over the years, that I can happily forward to you from a bunch of scientists explaining why it makes sense to do that. And I'm not, I mean, I'll tell you, this board, probably unlike any other board in the county, you have to rely on the expert. There's a lot of scientists telling us that these are the things you need to worry about, and kind of trust them in some ways, because none of us have PhDs in, you know, air quality. And so there's a, there's a level of threat that I have with our, and the folks that run things over there, but I will say, I've had that question multiple times, and I said, why don't we have one in our city? And it really comes down to the spatial difference of where they, of where they are and where it makes sense. Because again, why does Slough House have one? Well, it has one because of the topography, and that's, that's covering really from our border all the way out to Rancho area. So the argument is, where else would you have it if you didn't have it there? And would you get better accuracy for the number of people that you need to inform and cover having it here or having it, you know, half a mile outside of the city?
In the late '90s or 2000 or so, they used to have mobile...
In the late 90s or 2000 or so, they used to have mobile measuring devices that they would park around the county from time to time.
I can look into that. Linda, in eight years, I don't recall them doing a lot of that.
No, it's been years since I've seen one, but under Larry Green years ago, they used to run around town.
Maybe they finally got enough funding to cover what they wanted to cover, so they didn't need to move around anymore. But as far as I can recall, I mean, a lot of what the air district is doing, I mean, the eyes are very much on the air district in events like this, but the vast majority of their work is really grant funding for, you know, clean fleet replacements and a lot of other things. But the eyes all come back right about now when everybody wants to figure out, you know, is it safe for my kid to go ride the bike, which today it was not? Or to, you know, go out and walk my dog and that kind of stuff. So the overall budget of the air district, you know, only a limited amount of it really is used for these types of activities. So it's, and the resources for this kind of stuff is really, really limited. The amount of money that they even get to like refurbish these and maintain them is really limited. And, you know, surprise, surprise, the Trump administration has fought very hard to reduce funding in this area. Especially in the testing side of the world.
All right, any other questions on that? Sorry to put you on the spot there, Donald, but I thought it was a timely conversation. Uh, next up, Mr. Gatewood. And you're silent for a minute, Mr. Gate.
I don't really have anything, I don't really have anything as interesting as Donald, where everyone gets involved. So I got one thing, I guess. We begged at the library, we met with the library, and we begged their, she's trying to retire, Rizka. And so now she's no longer retiring because of all the struggles the library's going through. So we're begging her to continue her non-retirement for the next foreseeable years. So we locked her in, we changed her to the dark room, and she's not leaving. And somehow the library still exists. More and more people are looking to rent books at this time. So it's actually a strange thing, is that people drive up, rent a book, and that seems to be doing well for your local library. And that's about it for me.
Thank you. Rizka promised us she would never retire.
You have that in writing?
We do now.
That's good. All right, uh, let's see, I have brief updates. I was a speaker at the faith council last week doing a virology hat on COVID-19 update. My understanding is they are going to make that video public. And there was a lot of demand for that, a lot of interest in it. I personally think there's a lot of COVID information out there, but if I can be helpful delivering it and answering questions, I'm happy to do that, wearing my virology hat. Secog, we had a couple of meetings last week, the more important of which was we had transportation committee meeting and corridors task force meeting. I chaired that corridors task force. We are sort of wrapping up one year's effort on that corridors task force and coming up with a toolkit that can inform communities in the Sacramento region. What are some best practices or things that have been successful in our region and elsewhere for development along corridors? And then I'm hoping that we pick a couple of elements out of that and spend next year expanding on them, one of which appears to be a focus on all the special districts and the various barriers that they, let's be generous and say unintentionally, throw in front of infill development. So whether it's the sewer district with, you know, massive charges for replacement of old facilities, or whether it's a drainage question, or smud needing a new generator, and that new development's going to have to pay for the new, you know, whatever it is, there's all kinds of utility and special district issues that come up and just make infill development crushingly difficult. And I know, Linda, you've worked in this industry in some respects along these old corridors, placing things in them as a planner, and all of us serve on these boards in the region. And so we're all sort of corporately responsible for a lot of these, not all of them, but many of the decisions are made by these boards. But none of those boards are also accountable for the impact of those decisions on development. And so we've had several agencies come to us at Secog, to the task force, and say, how can we do, what can we do to sort of get out of the crosshairs, I guess? But it's my intention to continue at least with that. The other aspect that got mentioned in the last meeting was, we need to do a better job of informing all the agencies of these corridors about what sort of options they have and things that I've been thinking. It was basically a plea for the education of our colleagues to get council members from around the region more focused on infill. And so those are sort of the two takeaways from Secog last week. Linda, did you have a comment you wanted to make on that? No? Okay. RCAA held a meeting last week, so this is the U-Sports organization, of which I'm president, the Rancho Athletic Association. Those poor U-Sports providers are really struggling trying to figure out when, how, if they're going to be able to open in our current circumstances of this pandemic. The financial damage to some of them is significant. When we were doing our measure H this year, you colleagues generously said, you know, we're willing to shift the money around within other projects that are allotted to, or allotted to U-Sports to deal with some of the deficits that they're incurring. I mean, for example, Little League bought uniforms because they thought they're going to have a season. The pandemic occurred, they've got a bunch of uniforms that by and large won't be usable or may not be usable the subsequent year. Same goes for equipment, same goes for maintenance contracts, all kinds of stuff. Got these leads financially sideways. So all of them, at this point, are planning for some level of reopening. In some cases, they're looking at what the state allows, and they're offering special camps or training sessions or conditioning in their sport or related, in a completely safe way, following all the guidelines, but they're finding some sort of activities in which they can use their coaches and their kids and give kids an option to go stand in a park 12 feet away from any of their kids, but at least get some kind of exercise on days when the air is healthy and the temperature is not over a dangerous number. I mean, there are other challenges facing us, but hopefully those will not always be the case. So there's hope there, but I'm just sharing the message with you that it's a very challenging situation. Bob mentioned distance ed, and I had communications today with folks at the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District, where my foster son attends. And there is, there are challenges to distance ed. There are sometimes confusion about which classroom you should screen. There are class times when a teacher is not present. There are class times when a majority of the kids in the class are not present, or they're somewhere else. There are kids who are being counted absent when their screens are off or when their screens are on, but their faces can't be seen. So I think the standard is simply that you've logged in. For example, some kids don't want their home living situations to be seen by their friends. There's all sorts of stuff going on there. And so I would urge people in the, in the school district, any school district in Rancho Cordova, if you're experiencing those, or connection problems is another one. If you are experiencing those sorts of difficulties, please contact your school district, contact your principal, contact administrator. And if all else fails, can us help you? If you really need help, you can contact one of us and let us, you know, let the process work to try to get the appropriate education materials available for your child, get the appropriate access available, and make that system as accountable as we can make it. I've personally seen the challenges. I hear Bob talking about it, I hear neighbors talking about it, I hear stuff on social media. Last week, I did post on social media a request that went out, and this is next door, and on Facebook, I think is where I put it, asking people, are you having difficulty connecting? Interestingly, the majority of the comments came back from the Sac City Unified School District. I didn't receive any from Elgro, I didn't receive, well, maybe I got one from Folsom-Cordova. But I found out that the Folsom-Cordova School District has deployed, I think it was 399 was the count as of last week, Verizon hotspots to homes where these challenges are reported. And that apparently has been very effective for those folks, because we're not hearing additional complaints from there. Sac City Unified has a similar process, but they do not appear to be executing it as well. That's just my interpretation from what I've seen and from residents I've heard from in Lincoln Village in particular. So that might be something as a city we need to keep our eye on. Another issue that came up was, you know, there are a lot of poor families, and some of them are relying on the Comcast, and now I forgot the name of it, the Comcast entry-level access, they're sort of made open and available to everyone. Apparently, if you have multiple children in your home, all trying to do bandwidth demand processes at the same time, it can overwhelm that free Comcast service. And so parents are talking about, should we have some other alternative? And there's this photo that's gone, I don't really want to use the word viral, but everyone knows what that means, viral, of some kids sitting on a sidewalk in front of a Taco Bell in the Central Valley trying to do their homework. So the outside, on a sidewalk, in front of a Taco Bell, using the Taco Bell Wi-Fi to try to do their homework. That is not an acceptable situation in our community or any other, in my opinion. And so I've had some conversations with our supervisor and others at the county, talking about, is there, and the Park District, talking about, is there a way to make our parks all have live Wi-Fi? So at least you could sit on a park bench or at a picnic table, and this is the suggestion of some parents in Lincoln Village, to have an alternative to sitting in your home with bad bandwidth to try to help your kids get through school in this challenging time. So if I'm not mistaken, the county is going to be considering that, because supervisor totally did bring it up last week and made a recommendation for it. The Park District is very amenable to doing this. It's just a question of who pays and how quickly can we get it done? And what's the best way to do it? I just want to make you all aware of those discussions going on, find the saints.
So David, it really is a very complicated issue. You're right, and it kind of brings back the discussions that we had way back early on when we were talking about trying to, you know, it was real popular to make your whole city a Wi-Fi hotspot. And then a lot of the stores started doing it, and it seemed like almost every store you walk into, a note will pop up and say, there's Wi-Fi available. But it, going beyond that to the technology, we've got three kids at Cordova and one at Mitchell. And they're telling me that they're, that the platform that they're using, it also has its own challenges. It's called T-Met or EdTeam, I don't remember which. And unlike this, where you can see a tile for everybody, even if their face is not there, there's only one person on camera at a time. And so it may be that teachers are having trouble keeping up with people, because the person who is talking is the person who shows on the screen. And I'm not sure the teacher is able to see everybody else who is or is not on that, is or is not in class at the time. I'm not sure about that, but it sounded kind of odd.
I think in Folsom-Cordova, they tried to start this year using, is it Microsoft Teams? I might have that name wrong.
That's what it is, that's what it is.
Microsoft Teams.
Microsoft Teams.
And some, they did a poll of teachers, and it came back about 50/50, I'm told, that 50% of the teaching staff preferred Zoom, and the other 50% thought that this Microsoft product was good. I've heard generally negative things about the Microsoft product in comparison to Zoom, but I don't have vast experience on it, I've seen it a couple of times.
Yeah, well, just from the kids' perspective, it's not the best.
So I think they give teachers the option of using either one. I think that may be responsible for some empty classrooms, virtual classrooms, right? Where kids following the link to history, but history's not there anymore, history's on Zoom now, or something, that could be going on.
Interesting.
And then there's other platforms thrown in, you know, Google Classroom is commonly used, and of course, Power School for some grade records and attendance records. So it's multiple systems. And I want to give credit, you know, to schools. This is an incredibly challenging time, unprecedented, extremely difficult. I don't mean this in criticism, I just want to, you know, talk about what's really going on and see, you know, what role we've got to amplify solutions. All right, I think that's my report. Do you have anything else I want to add? If not, we're going on to item 13, city managers' report.
Hey David, can I just make one more comment that I just forgot?
Sure, go ahead, Donald.
For those of you, it's, when you say Sac City Unified, it kind of prompted me to remember the editorial that I saw, Marcus Paton pointing out that the first time probably in Sac B history that an editorial was on the front page of a Sunday newspaper. But the situation at Sac City Unified was dire before there was a pandemic, and what is going on today in Sac City Unified is a travesty. As a former school board member there, I have a lot of passion for those students and families and staff and everybody. And the fact that those two bodies cannot get together and figure out how they're going to educate children that are within our city is devastating to me. The fact that they, that all of this time has passed, and frankly, it seems like the teachers just don't want to talk. And it's really, really unfortunate, and the only people getting hurt right now are children. Five-year-olds and 10-year-olds and 15-year-olds in our city are losing out because adults can't work together. And this is, this is beyond just the pandemic and everything else that's going on to not be able to come together and work together for the betterment of our children is really, really sad. And I hope, you know, I hope they will figure it out soon. Whether that's a judge or somebody else that has to force them to do it, so be it. But stop hurting our kids, figure out how to work together, and educate our kids and help our families. That's it.
Yeah, that is a, a series of very serious situations facing that, facing that district.
Yeah.
There, the financial status alone, I guess, could trigger a state takeover, as I understand it. I don't know how long that process would take. It gets covered here and there, but I'm not, I'm not completely informed. The last thing I heard was there's a risk, the next risk date was February, I think.
That was prior to, that was prior to COVID, to be honest with you. So depending on exactly how the state triggers, if they don't get federal funding from the state and how that triples down so local districts can make that even faster. The process and the way it works is Dave Gordon at SOWI would have SOWI vote to issue a resolution that would create a loan to basically bail out Sac City Unified. It would be carried by the state assembly member that represents most of that area, which would be Kevin McCarthy. It would be entered into the legislature and then passed. And soon, once that loan is given to the school district, Dave Gordon, I believe, would appoint a trustee to oversee the repayment of that loan and then also run the school district. And the school board would become an advisory board to the trustee with no actual power. And that trustee's number one job, as charged by the state, by state law, would be to pay back that loan. I believe Oakland had this done 18 years ago and is still paying the loan back. So this is really, that would be really, really bad for everybody. But on top of the fact that they can't figure that out and can't figure out budget, the fact that they can't figure out how many hours their teachers are going to teach and what they're going to teach, and we are now on our third day of school at that school district. The first two days, they only agreed to teach one hour a day. As of today, the administration has an education plan, and the Sac City Teachers Association decided to adopt their own curriculum and own education plan and are instructing their members to teach on their plan and not the school district or the superintendent. It's a very, very sad day for public schools in Sacramento.
So we've got to, yeah, we've got to watch out for our residents in Lincoln Village as best we can under these circumstances.
Yeah.
And I know there are lots of transfers out of that school district. I don't know, I haven't had any numbers on Lincoln Village schools. But private schools are certainly reporting an awful lot of, I guess you would say, refugees.
Yeah, well, and keep in mind, yeah, we've got three schools in the city. We have another handful outside of the city, there's Sac City Unified that are serving our kids.
Right.
James Marshall. James Marshall, Sequoia, Golden Empire, Rosemont and Einstein, all have kids from Richmond-Cordova, those schools.
Spoken like a former school board member.
That represented that district.
That's right, in that location.
In that location. So, yeah, I mean, they are one of our three partners. And, you know, two of our school districts have been up and running and have had pretty darn good success, I would say, with what they've been trying to do. At least this reboot of disenfranchising seems to be going better than the last one. But to be this, to be already in school and not even have a plan agreed to, it's the only school district I have known in California that has this problem. So, I'm sorry, saying SAC City Unified reminded me, I wanted to say that.
Yep, thank you colleagues. Oh, City Manager, we were with you, so we went back to our own comments.
I guess. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that note, I think it's, just wanted to give you a bit of a positive news, good information, good news, that earlier this year Woodside Homes partnered with the St. Jude Children's Research Hospital to build the 2020 Sacramento St. Jude Dream Home. They reached out to us and asked for some assistance. We were able to provide them with some of the cost of some of the fees, some of the construction costs. And they have been able to get other donations and successfully completed the project. So they are in the process of selling their raffle tickets for this great cause. And as a token of appreciation, Woodside Homes have sent us a plaque that I will display in one of our conference rooms, but I just wanted to share this with you. Thank Woodside Homes for their recognition, but also thank them for the work they're doing with the Children's Hospital to make that project happen. And then the only other comment I had, I wanted to acknowledge our own city attorney, Adam Lindgren. The Sacramento Magazine has selected Adam as on the 2020 list of top lawyers in state, local, municipal law as determined by their peers. So this is a recognition of the work they do in focusing on strong community support, excellent client service, outstanding results, and obviously for their highly ranked expertise. So we're very fortunate to have Adam as our city attorney and congratulations for this well-deserved recognition. Just wanted to make sure I highlight this. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we are going to move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items, since this is a matter of routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. These are items 14.1 through 14.5. Are there any items the council wishes to pull?
I will move approval of items 14.1 through 14.5.
Bud, they're second by Terry, roll call please.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Thank you.
We are moving on to item 15, consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items, since this is a matter of routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I am going to open the public hearing. City clerk, do we have any speaker cards on this item?
I have one public comment that was submitted via email for item 15.1. It has been printed and distributed in the back of the room for the public. It has also been emailed to the city council. And the comment is from Kimberly Bankston Lee.
I think we all had a chance to do that, I saw it. She was in support of the ordinance. Are there any items the council wishes to pull?
No, but I'd like to ask a question about 15.1.
Okay.
As I read the, and this is probably a question for Adam. As I read the revisions to the definition of residential properties and the exemptions section. Adam, I am not clear how this would affect duplexes and halfplexes. They share common walls, they are quasi-multi-family, except that, well, a duplex could be considered multi-family. A halfplex theoretically is single-family. Because while they share the wall, on the other hand, it's a one-hour wall. So it's, so the two sides can be sold separately. And I'm wondering if there should be some mention of duplexes and halfplexes, some definition or application of one of those definitions.
It could apply to duplexes if they meet the other criteria, including shared walls, floors or ceilings.
Right.
If, what it wouldn't apply to was a duplex, it was a separate detached traditional granny unit. But we do think that the definition is otherwise pretty clear on that and don't think that we should have issues with this interpretation.
Okay, but let me go back again. Duplexes are typically considered part of multi-family because they do share the wall, they do share the ceiling and the floor and all that stuff. And they're typically rented. But a halfplex, by definition, is two separate units, even though they are joined, because of the way in which they are joined. So given that you, given that this doesn't apply to single-family, is there a case to be made that a halfplex is simply two single-family units side by side?
So we do not specifically call it halfplexes, but I think a dwelling unit, two dwelling units with the characteristics that you just described would be subject to the ordinance.
Okay, so my, the bottom line question is, should we be specific? Is there a potential for confusion or should we be specific? I know this is we, but I see my point.
I tend to think, Cyrus, unless I'm missing something, that I think the definition covers what you're describing. I think it will be adequate, I'm happy to give this some additional thought before the second reading and triple check that we don't need to reintroduce, but I'm quite confident that it covers the situation you described.
Okay, then I'll move items 15.1 and 15.2. But if you would just think about it, what you think.
I'll be happy to follow.
Okay.
Second. All right, motion made and seconded, I have closed the public hearing. Roll call please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Hi.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Thank you.
Item 16, public hearing items, we have none. Item 17, regular calendar items. We are moving on to item 17.1. The subject is Great Plates Delivered: Update and a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Contract Amendments with 10 participating restaurants not to exceed $200,000. Could we get a staff report on Great Plates Delivered?
Stefan is joining us remotely.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council, just as a quick introduction before Stefan joins us. First, I just want to really kind of acknowledge staff's work on the Great Plates program. This has been a joint effort between Stefan Heisler, Lori Anall, Matt Boulend and Laura Fickell, who very quickly pushed forward this program that the state allowed us the opportunity to administer and implement. And as we moved forward, wanted to make sure that there were options that we had moving forward, but mostly just wanted to acknowledge the great work that staff has done to work with this and put this program together, managing all the different restaurants, managing all of the seniors and the activities with the seniors and communications with the individuals and residents served with this program. So with that, I think this is an overall, a great approach to not only supporting our business community with the restaurants, but also the individuals and residents within the community. But I will hand it over to Mr. Heisler to give the presentation. Thank you.
All right, good evening, council, my name is Stefan Heisler. I'm housing manager for the city of Rancho Cordova.
What, 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 what was that?
Cyrus, he almost promoted.
I'm getting that update.
Cyrus, he took your job, get him.
I wouldn't want Cyrus's job.
He can't.
I meant to make you all chuckle, but not that early in the process, okay. So again, Stefan Heisler, housing manager for the city of Rancho Cordova. And on behalf of our project team, I'm happy to be presenting something, you know, in this world where so many things are going wrong, it's nice to be able to present something that really is going right. So I'll be giving you a quick overview of the program. I know you're probably familiar, but for our audience as well. And then I'll give you an update on the program achievements so far. And then we'll end with the request for contract amendments. And hopefully when I click, the slide will move on. There we go, okay. So quick overview, so this is a program launched by California Office of Emergency Services, CAL OES, in partnership with FEMA, and it is locally administered by city staff. So it is, it is a program two-pronged, which is, so it's helping provide economic stimulus to our local food service providers during the stay-at-home orders, as well as providing three home-delivered meals per day, seven days a week, to seniors ages 65 and older or adults ages 60 to 65 at high risk for COVID-19. So some program statistics so far, May 5th was our first day of meal delivery in the city. And this is currently extended actually until only tomorrow, September 9. But we are highly optimistic that we will receive another 30-day increments extension to October 9 of this year. As of today, we've served approximately, actually over 33,500 meals since May 5. And we are serving over 2,000 average meals per week. We've served over 137 unique residents already. And we're currently serving between 90 and 100 senior participants per day. We've helped over 14 local food service providers. Seven of them are active currently, providing all of the meal deliveries. They're doing a wonderful job. We've supported approximately 50 local jobs since the program started in May. And we provided approximately $625,000 of economic stimulus to our local businesses. So the business outreach for this program, we've, as well as receiving interest from businesses themselves, we've also gone out and done a number of different methods to procure businesses into this program. You can see we've emailed, we've partnered with the chamber, we've pushed information through our social media channels, we've done individual phone call outreach, and we've, of course, responded to the folks that have identified as interested on the state's interest list. However, at this time, there is a need to amend our food service provider contracts to continue the program. We're currently limited at the city manager's spending authority of about $100,000. But at this time, we're approaching the need to go beyond that. The food service providers, they're, not everyone is a great fit for the program as much as we would like them to be. But the food service providers do have to meet the specific nutritional, delivery, insurance, and probably the biggest kicker is the menu flexibility requirement. So at this time, despite our efforts at outreach, we are experiencing a shortage of new interested restaurants to keep the program running past our contracted limits. So the request for this evening, if council wishes to adopt the task resolution, will allow the city manager to execute contract amendments with up to 10 local food service providers up to and not to exceed $200,000. This will provide flexibility for the program to continue through the end of December 2020. It does still allow us to terminate the program if FEMA does not extend the program or if there are any local issues that we can't resolve. There is a small fiscal impact to this. There is a 6.25% local cost share requirement. However, this local cost share requirement can be met using the funds received from the CARES Act. And we do expect the local cost share for the total program since inception in May through December 31st to not exceed $100,000. And this would be covered by the CARES Act. And if FEMA extends the program into 2021, or if we expect that they will, we will be coming back in December for more discussion with the council. So the staff recommendation for this is to adopt the resolution, which would provide continued program flexibility through the end of the calendar year, 2020, or until FEMA ends the program as sooner. And to be clear, this allows the city to contract up to the $200,000, but not necessarily using all of that in every case for each restaurant during this period of time. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any comments and questions.
All right, do we have any speaker cards on this item?
We have none in the, we have none in the room. And I'm looking in Zoom and I don't see any, no.
Okay, if you have some, I will, I'll circle back if my clerk tells me there are any. You just need to raise your hand if you're in Zoom. Council, questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, David, but this is an absolutely wonderful program and it really speaks to one of the emails that we all received today. And I would move approval of the resolution.
Yeah, I'd happily second it and echo the comments. You know, great job Stefan and the rest of you.
We have a question and a second for the discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think I learned about this when Jim Tabuchy sent me an email from the Mandarin and said, hey, I heard about this thing, can you guys do it? And I think I forwarded over to Cyrus, I think. And I just said, you know, I haven't heard anything about this. And I mean, all those things are moving so fast that, you know, there was a new program or idea that was in the CARES Act that we learned about every day. Being in banking, I was, needing even PPP loans. But I just think it's great that, you know, we were able to activate this so fast and get it going. And it's been, you know, critical not only to helping seniors, you know, and books, but also, you know, to really help some of our restaurants stay afloat through all of this.
Absolutely.
You know, there was a comment made, I guess it was at the Air District meeting, where Jeff Harris was saying, you know, if the state starts letting everybody remote from home, what that's going to do to restaurants and local businesses in Midtown. And we have the exact same direct, you know, a lot of our insurance companies and other companies, their people can work remotely and that's going to be very painful to the restaurants that survive because of a lunch rush or maybe breakfast. And they're not going to make up for that just by, you know, doing takeout on Sundays from our residents. You know, we have 40,000 people a day that are coming into our city and I'm guessing less than half of them are doing that right now. So this is critical work, so thank you very much.
Donald, you're absolutely right. We've got 24 restaurants, individual restaurants, within walking distance of 35,000 jobs.
Wow.
And they all walk over and including people at City Hall and.
And we've already locked some of them.
And there's another one going.
Wow.
So, yep.
All right, we have a motion to second any further discussion. I agree with your comments, both of you. Great, great program, it's a win-win, maybe a win-win-win, depending on how you want to count it. Right, if nothing else, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Thank you.
Good, that takes us on to item 17.2, the subject is City of Rancho Cordova COVID-19 Small Business Relief Grant Program. Relief Grant Program. And I think, Micah, you got the lead on this one?
Sure. I'll just, Mr. Mayor, Council, Micah Runner, Deputy City Manager, just a brief overview, and then I will hand it over to Amanda Norton, who will go over the presentation. But businesses, and small businesses in particular, have really been greatly impacted by this crisis. And one of the tools that we have seen and used in other places, and one of the tools that it seems has been successful in other places, is looking at a small business grant program. And so this, along with a lot of the other tools that we have, the business consultant groups that we work with, the different other tools that are out there, we think could be another tool in the toolbox to, to help our struggling business community. This is not going to solve everybody's problem. This is not the savior that's gonna save all the businesses, but it is really a small effort to do what we can to support the local business community, the local businesses that are here, that not only have businesses here, but many of them live here as well and run their businesses here. So with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Norton, who will do a quick run-through. Thank you.
Micah, can I ask one quick question, just to make sure I don't confuse myself? You're not gonna talk about lending partnership program with a good region business, are you?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Amanda Norton, Economic Development Manager, Economic Development Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova. A little background on how we got to our program tonight, if my clicker is working. Oh. Yeah, okay, we're live. So what we know, as has kind of been talked about previously this evening, we know that many small businesses have shut down due to the COVID pandemic. People have lost their jobs, and as just mentioned, some businesses have permanently closed. And the truth is, we really don't know the full ramifications of this pandemic on our economics here as a city and as a nation, or how soon our businesses will be able to fully open or will open at 100% capacity. The governor and the public health director continually revise the health orders, and all of these orders do impact our local businesses. What we have done today is the city has funded the Rancho Cordova Chamber COVID-19 Micro Grant Program to assist small and home-based businesses. For just a little context, that program was oversubscribed in less than 24 hours, so we do recognize that there is a lot of need out there. As such, we have prepared the Rancho Cordova COVID-19 Small Business Relief Program in order to assist those businesses that have been negatively impacted by the pandemic. Little basics, we're looking at doing it with 200,000 in available funds. We will prioritize businesses that are impacted by the shutdowns. It's focused on small businesses, and the goal is to supply these funds quickly. Some key program eligibility requirements is, of course, the business must be located here in Rancho Cordova. And grants are up to $10,000 based on full-time equivalent employees. And what that also means is so businesses with one to five employees will receive up to a maximum of $2,500. Businesses with six to 15 employees can receive up to $5,000. And businesses up to, from 16 to 25 employees can receive up to $10,000. And business owners do count as a full-time employee, assuming that they are being paid by their own company. So while the SBA, Small Business Administration, has 500 jobs and below listed as small businesses, we are specifically focusing on 25 or less. Part of that is because we know that the average number of employees in a Rancho Cordova business is less than 14. We are also looking at businesses that have been open since March of 2019, and of course, are in good standing with all state federal laws. We also have a kind of some rules around how the businesses, or I should say, some guidelines, really, about how they could be used for funds. We want this to be as user-friendly for our businesses as possible, so it could be for general business operations, equipment purchases, you know, shifting business models, whether they're moving outdoors now in the current environment, hopefully we'll be removing indoors, technology to shift their products and their services online, et cetera. We're also focused on specific priority industries that were expressly hard-hit by the pandemic. So this is retail, which would be classified as the nonessential retail, so grocery stores and mini-marts and the like would not be considered for this. Restaurants that did not have a drive-through would be considered. Other hospitality, such as caterers. Sorry about that feedback. Helping fitness salons. We'll hope that stops. And then you can read all from the list, but also nonessential office users, that's one group that we haven't really heard from a lot of, but these are all the folks that were not allowed still to come back to their offices in many cases and are experiencing losses due to the pandemic. For how the program will lay out, what our proposal is, is there will be a one-week application period, so they have a full seven days to submit an application to us. And the businesses will be sorted into the funding categories, so that's the number of employees, the one to five, the six to 15, and the 16 to 25. The businesses within each of those individual categories will be selected by a lottery system, and then we will work with the businesses on their funding based on their requests. The reason for that is we want the program to be as flexible as possible, but we also wanna adhere to all the federal reporting rules. So if the program has been in the city's Great Plate Program, the LIFT Investing Program, or has received and not returned funds from the Payable Protection Program, or the industry, the Economic Industry Disaster Loan, we wanna marry not overlapped those federal funding programs with our own dollars. So we're proposing to fund the grants either using the Economic Development Department's Community Enhancement Fund budget, or CARES Act fund. We'll kind of mix and match those to whatever works best to meet our businesses' needs. We fully expect this program to be oversubscribed. Not everyone who applies will get funding, and just based on that also from the Chamber's Micro Grant Program, which I mentioned earlier this evening. So before you this evening, what we are proposing is the staff is recommending that city council approve the Rancho Cordova Small Business Grant Program in the amount of $200,000. And then we are also recommending providing an additional $50,000 to the Rancho Cordova Chamber COVID-19 Micro Grant Awards Programs, and all of those will come out of the CEF Department's funds. And I'm happy to answer any questions, both from council and from our viewing public online.
I have a question.
Yes, Donald?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, if, if this does get oversubscribed, are you gonna just stick directly to the funding mechanisms the way you have, or would you want flexibility to do smaller grants and cast a wider net? Like, what are your thoughts around that?
So our thoughts around that is, we also recommend, and this will probably be a little bit of a learning curve, and we'll really get a chance to hear from our business community of what their needs are. So based on what we get from this round, if we are fortunate enough to apply for another round, we will come back to and modify the guidelines if we do get additional funding to help our businesses. But that will be at your discretion.
Any public comments on this item?
We do have one public comment. We do not have a public comment. We have no public comment in Zoom or in the council chambers.
I thought I saw Diane Rogers in the room. She might wanna do, uh, added something. Maybe not.
She is now coming, she's now coming forward.
Now I guilted her into it.
Yeah, she gets called up by the mayor, so she's not gonna talk.
I was just trying to be helpful.
I was just taking a...
Much appreciated, Mr. Mayor. Diane Rogers, President and CEO of the Rancho Chamber. I was just trying to keep time to a limited. But on behalf of the Chamber, I do wanna thank the city and the council for their support of the Micro Grant Program. We did up to $1,000, had 11 folks, and full credit to your staff. I predicted about 36 hours. They predicted less than 24, and in 23 hours, we were completely, as the term would go, sold out. But to give you an example, the kinds of things we were able to support, $500 for grain, malt, and corn, and for sanitizer bottles, folding chairs, new signs, window painting, pop-up tents, laptops, headset and microphones, cleaning supplies, small yoga balls and therabands for students, and mobile workstations and things like that. So it was very successful and very well-received. So thank you on behalf of doing that. So if there's any questions about that program, I'm happy to answer it.
All right. Thank you very much, Diane. Always good to hear from the Chamber. All right. Any other comments on this item? I would just add, you know, small business, the estimate is, makes up 44% of the economy. And the National Federation of Independent Business, I think on September 1st, came out with a survey where their membership indicated at a 20% rate that they could close, given the COVID pandemic. The financial impacts are just too much to keep the small business operating, and a 20% loss of 44% of our economy is not an insubstantial amount. That is a very substantial amount. And of course, this is also the sector of the economy where so much innovation comes from, and so much local character and services to our residents. The places that, that make Rancho Cordova so fun to live in are those most likely to be small businesses affected by, by these shutdowns, so...
In employment, David.
Yeah. And on top of that, all the jobs that are based in that, that sector of the economy.
I know, we all know local businesses that are owned or managed or operated by people who live here. I was talking with one of them today.
So they're entrepreneurial by nature, they're doing their best to adapt.
Great. Those people are great individuals. I'm just gonna tell you right now. Two of them on council.
Happy self on the back, Garrett.
All right. Any other discussion?
Um, I will move approval of the resolution establishing the Small Business Relief Grant Program.
Second. Is there a second?
Second, second.
All right. Small call, please, if there's no other discussion.
Was that Vice Mayor Gatewood that seconded?
Yes. You know what it is?
Thank you. Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Hi.
Councilmember Terry?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great work. All right. We are moving on to item 17.3. The subject is an update of the city COVID-19 response costs. And we need a staff report on this item.
Kim is joining us live here in the council chambers, and we're pulling up a presentation.
All right, Kim, welcome to the, the chambers. I don't know if they're city, I guess they're still city council chambers, and they don't have any city council in them. They're all remote.
We're holding the fort for you, Mr. Mayor.
There we go.
Go back. I'm trying. There we go. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Kim Duran-Carragio, City's Administrative Services Director. My report this evening is to provide an update on COVID-19 response costs incurred by the city since the beginning of the pandemic in March 2020. This report will focus only on costs incurred by the city to directly respond to the COVID-19 pandemic and will not encompass any of the COVID-19 economic impacts on the city budget. We did have a discussion in June on that, and we'll have some follow-up discussions in later coming months. So starting off, when the city, when it became clear back in March that the COVID-19 pandemic was going to have a significant impact on city operations, staff decided to create a COVID-19 project that would enable the city to capture all costs related to responding to COVID-19. This would allow us to capture those costs and also be eligible for any potential reimbursement opportunities that may arise down the road. Costs captured since that time included staff time as staff worked to respond to COVID-19. They coded and tracked time on time sheets, and that includes things like the Emergency Operations Center, as well as the enforcement of the county and the communication of the county's stay-at-home order. In addition, there were technology costs that the city incurred associated with transitioning city staff to telecommuting, purchases of personal protective equipment, communication and translation costs of the county health order information to the community, costs associated with federal and state leaves associated with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. We also had economic support to the business and nonprofit community, as well as the Great Plates Program. So these are just some examples of broad categories in which the city did incur costs beginning back in March. So one avenue for reimbursement for the city is through FEMA. FEMA typically during a disaster, when a disaster is declared, FEMA will reimburse agencies for what they refer to as extraordinary costs. And so what an extraordinary cost means is that it can't be a budgeted, a regular budgeted cost that the city had already planned on spending, and it has to be a cost that would only have been incurred because of the disaster itself. So if you use staff time as an example, for example, our code enforcement staff were out in the field, working to enforce this county's stay-at-home order. However, that regular staff time, even though they were focused completely on COVID-19, that regular staff time is not considered extraordinary cost. It is not reimbursable through FEMA. However, if overtime were to be incurred by that same code enforcement officer, that would be an eligible cost. And similar with staff, not staff, with equipment purchases operate much the same way. So the city was tracking those costs and took every opportunity it could to reimburse for FEMA reimbursement. FEMA will reimburse 75% of eligible costs, and then typically, the city's share is 25%. The exception to that is the Great Plates Program. The Great Plates Program has a state-of-California reimbursement of 18.75%, so the city's share of that program is 6.25%. So overall, just walking through here quickly, the Great Plates Program, this slide shows that as of the end of August, we estimated to have incurred about $537,000 of costs to date, as the number of meals has ramped up since the program has kicked off. And per the earlier discussion, we estimate that the, that program will continue through the end of the calendar year and would likely incur about $990,000 in costs through that period of time. So for a total outlay of about $1.5 million, the city does front this money and then seeks reimbursement. And I'm happy to say that it's an expedited reimbursement, and we have already received several checks to reimburse us for costs to date. So if we incur about $1.5 million in costs, we expect to receive about reimbursement of about $1.4 million, leaving the city's share of just under $100,000 at $95,000. In the lower half, FEMA-eligible equipment purchases and response costs, we just had some miscellaneous PPE purchases and overtime that was eligible, about $21,000 submitted to date. And so the city will receive about $16,000 in reimbursement costs and have about $5,300 of costs that will be unreimbursed. Any questions on that slide before I move on? The next slide is CARES Act funding. So the city was notified in July that it would receive some CARES Act funding. Now, there was a lot of discussion early in the spring when the CARES Act was passed. Larger cities of, that had a population in excess of a half-million people, like Sacramento, did receive CARES Act funding directly from the federal government back in the spring, so there's been some discussion about it for some time. Smaller cities like Rancho Cordova did not, were not eligible for that first installment of CARES Act funds. However, the state budget, the fiscal 2021 state budget, did allocate funding to all cities in California based on population. These funds can only be used for COVID-19 response costs between March and December of 2020. These funds also, it's important just to note that these funds cannot be used to backfill lost revenue that is due to the COVID-19 economic crisis. So this next slide shows essentially all COVID-19 response costs that the city has borne to date. borne to date. So the first half is through the end of this past fiscal year, just walking through that city's staff time responding to COVID-19, this is city's staff costs. So like I mentioned earlier, staff time spent working in the EOC, code enforcement time out in the field, communication costs, those are all captured in that number. There is some public safety contract costs, about ten percent is what we've deemed to be COVID-19-related that we've captured in that project. We have some miscellaneous contract costs in there. That includes some of the things I mentioned earlier, like getting, setting up employees for telecommuting, miscellaneous expenses, as well as economic support to small businesses and the nonprofit community to date. So through June thirtieth, we've had about total expenses of one point three million. And then looking forward from July first to the end of the calendar year, we estimate we'll continue to have staff time approximately fifty thousand dollars. We talked about how this Great Plates Program will continue, so total reimburse, our total city's share of about ninety-five thousand dollars. City's share of some FEMA-eligible equipment purchases of fifty-three hundred dollars, as well as the proposed Small Business Relief Grant Program that you just heard about at another two hundred thousand dollars. So overall, based on just everything that we've kind of incurred to date and discussed so far, we have about, anticipated about one point six million, just shy of one point seven million dollars of COVID-19-related expenses. So overall, you know, just even as of June thirtieth, before we were even notified that even any CARES Act funding would be available, the city had already expended far more than it would receive in any potential type of reimbursement costs. So that said, we know there are, continue to be many additional needs in the Rancho Cordova community, and so if there are any other areas that the council is interested in having staff explore, we are interested in hearing it at this time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hey, questions for staff?
No, but thank you for the information.
So it looks like by the end of the year, we'll basically deficit seven hundred and eleven thousand on this whole COVID account. So for example, the fact that public safety is listed there because it's reimbursable doesn't mean that's actually where we're going to spend money, because we're looking at seven hundred and eleven thousand short, and that's only five thirty-four.
Correct.
In other words, if zeroed out, we're still upside down on expenses for COVID. And this, again, doesn't account for any lost revenue, of which there's also substantial lost revenue to the city.
Correct.
It is interesting, you know, that City of Sacramento got CARES dollars, I think it totaled almost ninety million dollars, eighty-nine million dollars, something in that range, comes out to like a hundred and eighty dollars per resident in the City of Sacramento. The county, if you add up their two shares, their CARES dollars, and then the additional dollars they receive from the state, comes to about a hundred and forty-seven dollars per resident for them. Ironically, they have the responsibility of public health, they receive less per capita than the City of Sacramento. It's a pretty crazy, pretty crazy situation. And Rancho Cordova, our share, Sac City, a hundred and eighty, Sacramento County, a hundred and forty-seven, Rancho Cordova, twelve dollars and seventy-two cents per resident. So there's no equity necessarily in this, or rhyme or reason, nor the ability to do tremendously large things at twelve dollars per resident when we're already, we're already deficiting and losing revenue. I do think there are probably some things we should look at. For example, you know, people who are economically impacted by this pandemic, one way you can assist them and improve their lives is to decrease some of their expenses. And one obvious, easy thing that we could examine, and I'm not sure this is necessary because they're already doing a great job, but it, but it might be, is the Food Locker. Because there are no restrictions right now on the operations of the Food Locker, the Rancho of the Food Locker. It is serving, I think, a record number of people, from my understanding. And they're doing great work, really, really great work. They have modernized themselves, incorporated themselves, created a nonprofit, really, really stepped up. And that's been going on with city support for years now. We're really proud of them, you know, as a, as a local nonprofit. But this pandemic has pushed some people to the economic edge. And rather than try to assist with Rancho Utilities or all the myriad of other things that people are talking about, this seems like a way to cut people's food bills, and the only thing you have to do is show up and ask for it. That's the only, the only requirement. So I, I think we should, you know, consider, is there something they need? Is there a shortage they have? Is there a facility requirement? What's, what's going on with the, with the Food Locker that might, you know, be able to provide something across the board to our residents who need it the most?
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, we are in constant communication with various nonprofit organizations, including Food Locker, and have been able to step in and assist through some additional aid and assistance. So we're very much in tune with their needs and what they, what they're looking for from the city. And we will continue to do so.
I have a meeting I'm going to parent on a couple of kids, so I shall be leaving right now.
Okay, Bob. Thank you. Cyrus, in those discussions with the Food Locker, is there anything obvious that's cropping up as a, as a need that's sort of unmet at this point?
I think, you know, the broad comment I would like to make, unlike some other jurisdictions or communities, we're not recommending or suggesting that we use the CARES Act funding to balance our budget. We made that decision, we made that call early on when we were discussing our, our budget and the potential impact of the COVID-19 to, to the budget. So this gives the city a great deal of flexibility how we want to spend this CARES Act funding. We may have to, you know, obviously, we have to be very mindful of maximizing and making sure that we get all of our funding through the state, or nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So the mechanics of it and how it works, we will be sure to submit what is deemed eligible for, for state funding. But this is not, you know, whatever funding that you, the city council choose or decide, we could, or programs or activities, we could fund and would be able to use the CARES Act funding to pay for those. We don't need to put this, we don't need to place these funds in our budget to balance our budget. We've already made that call, and we've already made that decision. So we can continue looking for it. The fortunate thing is that we also have some other means available to us in, if there are specific needs related to nonprofit organizations or the service organizations through our community enhancement funds and other funding that we have identified. So I cannot think of any immediate needs, but if the council has some specific needs in mind, we could certainly look into those.
Oh, I have a question.
Go ahead, Linda.
So I know that Rancho Cordova provided Chromebooks, and I'm assuming that Outgrow Unified did some equivalent. Regardless of what's going on between the superintendent and the union in Sac City, do we know whether they made Chromebooks available to their students?
I do know for a fact that they did. I was, yeah, they, they have provided those to their students.
Okay, so then if we assume that all of our students have a device, if they needed one, then what about this business of the Wi-Fi hotspots? Would that be an equivalent, I mean, would that be an approvable expenditure to make sure that the kids could actually use those to get online?
I think, you know, the, the point is, we, you know, regardless of whether this is, you know, we can get this past the state or not, we will be able to submit eligible expenses to the, to the Fed, to the state, based on the spreadsheet that Kim shared with you. So we'll be able to get our monies, our total allocation from, from the state. Then we can decide.
Believe the surplus of expense.
Right? Yeah. So, so I think, I think based on your preference and how you want to spend those funding, and we, it's important that we hear from you what they are, then we will be sure to spend the funds in that specific programs or specific activity. We don't want to play a shell game. We want to be able to give it to the, give it to whatever the intent and the desire of the city council is.
So do we need a, do we need like an hour's workshop on, on this to bring ideas, or what? What, what mechanism do you want to use to gather ideas?
I think this is one, this, this forum is definitely one. I don't know what, we could, we could make this a topic of conversation for a future meeting if you'd like to, but we felt that this would be an opportunity that you, for you to start the dialogue and the conversation. Recognizing that there's a limitation to the amount of time that we have, we basically, we, we were notified in July, the guidelines were not provided until very recently, just until about a couple of weeks ago. Even, even today, I don't think the guidelines are fully clear, but, and we only have until the end of December to spend the funds. So we have to keep all those in mind.
I don't think the, the date is, is necessary. I mean, we're gonna do what we need to do. We already have been doing what we need to do.
Yeah.
And we've had, we have had discussions ever since this started, you know, about what sort of interventions and changes we need to make. It's been a, a regular, a regular issue at our city council meetings. But Linda's point is also well-taken. You know, if there are ideas out there that we're not uncovering yet, we need to hear about them in some form. Another one I would throw out is a suggestion from a resident, which is make PPE available to the public at some level. So I know we informally have done this through City Hall, we've done this through the sheltering activities we've been involved in, we have done this through small business, and making PPE available to small business so people can, can operate safely. Perhaps there's another avenue there to, to acquire masks or distribute masks. I know U.S. Conference of Mayors has, has had us as the recipient of, I've received several packages of masks, and they have gone to either local charities or, or City Hall from potential vendors. Some of them, frankly, not so good, others pretty good. But, you know, maybe there's something there with our, with our population that someone was having difficulty, or not making their own, or not able to, you know, able to acquire a more durable mask.
Um, David, along that, along that line, you're right, you're quoting from the letter we all got today. I haven't, I haven't, I don't think I've been into anywhere that they weren't actually providing people a mask if they didn't have one. They were either saying, you can't come in without, or here's, go see customer service, we've got a mask for you.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would agree with that, but I, I still don't see the harm in making sure that we have a supply and said, you know, if you need one, come to City Hall, or, you know, you know, buying a, I don't know, a ten thousand of them or something, I don't know. I know we, we purchased a bunch for high school graduates. But yeah, I mean, that, to me, that, that would make some sense. I, I know there have been some other conversations, mainly from council candidates, about like stockpiling so that, you know, the next time this happens, we have them all. But, I mean, there's no shortage of them anymore. The question is gonna be for the people that don't have the means to purchase them themselves, you know, so you can go and get the one that you get when you're going in the grocery store that they're offering you, but that's a single-use one, and then you gotta find another one at the next place you go. So I don't know, that's, that's probably not the best way to get people to just wear them outside all the time, right? Which is what we're asking people to, you know, if you're outside and you can't sell for this, and you should have a mask on. You know, stopping by Rayleigh's or, or the coffee shop probably isn't the solution to addressing that level of problem.
No, I.
But again, I, I will also say that, and I posted this on my Facebook yesterday, I saw somebody in a grocery store yesterday that bought a mask that matched her, her nice blouse that she had on, but didn't do a lot of good while she held it in her hands going through the checkout at Great.
Is that the, is that the phone or the credit card needing a facial ID? That's an interesting challenge.
Oh, no, 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 she was the one that, they were four spots away from the, the register, and she was holding it in her hand.
Yeah.
They bagged all of her groceries. I digress. But I do think that's a great idea.
I also have a lot of single-use masks, can be multi-use masks. It's not, not necessarily have to be spelled on one use.
You feel better.
Yeah.
But yeah.
But I, I like, I like that idea of looking into that, Linda.
Yeah, and buying masks is, it should be a no-brainer, you know. Buying them and getting them distributed to anybody who, who wanted them should, should be a no-brainer.
Be cautious about the stockpile, because once you establish such a thing, you have to maintain it.
I totally agree with you. I'm not saying, I like the idea, I'm just saying that there's been talk of that. Yeah, I'm just saying that there's been talk of it. But I, I would think it would make a lot of sense to have it at, like, you know, neighborhood services, at City Hall, at the police station, that, you know, now through the end of the year, if somebody needs it, maybe it's, it's even the clock ones, right?
They're already at City Hall. We already have them scattered around City Hall.
Yeah.
If you're coming to pick up their masks, yeah.
I just have one caution, guys. You know, I absolutely love my Lancer mask, but it, it's hot, it is fuzzy, it is difficult to breathe through.
Yeah.
So could we please investigate, let's, let's do an official Rancho Cordova mask that, that is a little more user-friendly.
Whichever ones we got that came in the paper bags, that brand are the ones I'm wearing now. They're more comfortable, they're big enough, those are the, all of the Cordova ones and the ones we got for school, they're just too small for me. But, you know, I got a big German nose, so that's probably a part of my problem.
So.
I'd say I hire them at the time, but I'm actually.
I think point is well-taken. We will certainly, it looks like there is a desire on part of the council to have some additional face masks available for public consumption, and we will work on that. One option would be, I think, the, in terms of soliciting public input, we could possibly do it through our public channels about the, some, soliciting some ideas, and then bringing this back for a council discussion at a future meeting. That's, that's one way to have this conversation.
I, I, I'll be honest with you, I was just gonna say, I, I trust your judgment, if you wanna go out and do some public, you know, take some public input and come up with a plan, just go do it. So long as it's under your spending authority, I, I would trust you to make that decision instead of waiting for another council meeting to get this back on the agenda. You can give us an update at some point about what your plan is that you did, but don't wait to come and get a vote from us.
Um, wouldn't we all like to know what staff is doing?
No, I, I would like to get an update. I don't want them to wait to do something, is what I'm saying. That's all.
I think what.
You can bring it back to inform us what you did.
Right. I think what, maybe we can just put this slide on the, on the, on the screen. What Kim presented is what, is a list of eligible expenses. This, this will all qualify, and we could give some or a combination of these expenses to, for reimbursement. What our question ultimately is, is there something on this list that's missing? Do you want to, do you want, you know, I, I heard you loud and clear that you want some additional protective equipment, but is there any other expense or any other program that you would like to fund through this fund, through the CARES Act?
Yeah, I, I had, I had another idea.
Right.
And this would be a buy local as much as we can. I, I, I don't know if there's any manufacturers of masks local, but even if it's like, you know, funding, I, I know at one point there are like sewing clubs that were making them. If there are local people that wanna make them, that we could buy in some way, I don't know if that's a lot of expense. But the other idea would be buying hand sanitizers to give out to, to people that can't afford to buy it. it themselves, to have at home. I know there's no shortage of it anymore. I mean, you know, there's, you know, barrels of it at Home Depot and Lowe's and stuff like that, so it's not like you can't find it, but a lot of these things are being recalled. And we have two manufacturers in town, they also sell other really great distilled products that you can get from them. But if we could buy hand sanitizer, and I know one of the manufacturers, his biggest struggle was trying to find spray tops for the bottles of it, but, you know, they've been selling, David, I think you even said that your wife's business was buying from Gold River Distillery.
Yeah.
But if there'd be a way to even, to even do that and purchase a few thousand, I know, just in talking with him, he had, he had enough to make thousands and thousands of bottles of this stuff. Like, he couldn't get his hands on enough of the spray tops to go on his bottles. Personally, I went over there, I bought, I bought a gallon of this stuff, and he sells it in vodka-sized bottles that he has, and he just puts a different label on. So I have bottles, I have bottles this big that look like vodka, and they're all hand sanitized.
Don't confuse them.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, it's got a lot more alcohol, but I haven't tried it. I would love to see us work with them and Kevin over at Sister Distillery, because I know, you know, they made a lot of this stuff, and now there's a lot of foreign manufacturers that have gotten into the market, and they may have leftover stuff that we can maybe buy from them and, and get it to our residents. And it's good, it's good stuff. It, to be honest with you, it's way better than any of the stuff that you could buy at the store. Doesn't, you know, for me, it doesn't, it doesn't grab at your hands, it doesn't leave them sticky.
Right.
And if, and if we could support multiple businesses, I think that'd be great.
So I'm hearing, if I may, I'm hearing from the council that personal protective equipment and hand sanitizers, would you like to give us an idea in order of magnitude? Are we, are we suggesting spend 80% of our CARES Act funding to buy hand sanitizers? Or do you want to put a dollar?
No, no, no.
Got to evaluate that.
I would come up, I would, I would trust you to come up with some sort of figuring out how much public demand there would be for these things before going out and just buy a bunch of it. But again, I'd rather you act on your own if you need to, but I would imagine that neither of those items would be over your, your city manager's spending authority in those two items.
So I would say test the, test the waters, you know, see what the demand is, you can make announcements on our various channels, that, you know, we have support available if you need something, and just report back to us. Maybe every meeting, and city managers report, or agendize it if it's necessary for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, another idea, you know, I know there's been this request from at least one constituent to David and I about these Wi-Fi spots within parks and stuff, but, you know, we also just talked about how the air is unhealthy and you shouldn't be outside. So if that also means, you know, the school districts have been handing out these, what I'm guessing are like Verizon jet packs and stuff like that, and they're great, but, and they can handle, a lot of them can handle multiple devices, but at a certain point, they kind of, they get overwhelmed. So maybe even seeing that there are families out there that just, and maybe this is working with the school district, that have so many, you know, kids in the family that they need another one of them to lighten the load. Maybe it's just supplementing, you know, maybe it's 100 families out there that, you know, that have five or seven kids, you know, trying to access that same wireless hotspot that starts to overwhelm them. Maybe, maybe working with Verizon or somebody else to figure out how we would supply a few more of those beyond what the school districts are already doing.
We do have two sitting with chief providers.
Good on you, Eric, sorry.
I was just saying Comcast has partnerships right now with the Verizon providers, and they can act as another hotspot through their system. So you can have people that have the hotspot on top of the other one.
Yeah, or maybe even it's just figuring out that people need a small supplement, you know, maybe for the next six months, we can work with Comcast to come up with like an account that people can access to get a higher bandwidth. You know, maybe, maybe, maybe that free or low-cost account is just not working well enough, and for like $10 more a month, they could get, you know, double the speed or something.
Yeah, or we can get on their Black Web. There's always that.
What does that mean?
Comcast has a dark web that they offer to schools and people with low costs, and it's got this crazy amount of bandwidth that they've already built, and we paid for to have built, there's no reason why we can't put our citizens of need on it.
Okay, sure. And I mean, if there, if there's some way, I guess I'm saying, of using these additional funds and looking at kind of what you're doing, if there is a way to help ensure that our students are connected, and also, we haven't really talked a lot about this, but even our Promise students and post my college, you know, is there, is there a need there? I know, you know, they're all going to be distance learning for a while, and I know we've already used Promise funds to make sure that they had equipment, but is, you know, are we sure that they have the kind of connectivity that they need and that they're not parking outside of Starbucks to do their homework? Or to take classes, for that matter?
My understanding is schools in California are getting reimbursed every time they have to deploy equipment, and they have an obligation to deploy equipment to get everybody online.
And is that the same for universities?
That's, I don't know, junior colleges, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, well, and that's always the weird thing about community college, is that, like, sometimes they're treated as like K-14, and sometimes they're treated as like a college. So they, and sometimes they get forgotten by both, right? Look, they adopt these things, and it's all K-12, and then sometimes they adopt it and it's a K-14 kind of system, and then sometimes they just do K-12, and then they forget about colleges, and they think CSU's and UC's are, you know, handle it themselves. So maybe it's just a call to Whitney and Brian over at Los Rios to say, "Is there anything we could help you with?" But I know STC has been really creative in trying to figure out ways to help our Promise students in general, but maybe that's another way that we could, you know, save some of our Measure H funds for something else and tap in here.
I think we've probably done a pretty creative job with our Measure H grantees. The odd thing, you know, about Ranch of Cordova in comparison to neighboring jurisdictions, is we distribute a lot to our local nonprofits through Measure H.
Yeah.
And, you know, neighboring jurisdictions have never done this before, so it feels, you know, really new and exciting to them, but for us, you know, we've already made a lot of accommodations, I'm sure, in Measure H, I know of many myself. But, and the food locker may fall under that category, that's the other agency I would sort of put out there. And I also know that the county, in whatever their, their announcement may be, they're looking at how do they serve food lockers. There was a recommendation that they, I think it was just pick the downtown food locker and just help it, because it's kind of a parent organization for the others. But at the last meeting that I listened to at the county, it sounded as if there was a majority of the board wishing that they would diversify that and look at all the food lockers in the county. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't overlook that opportunity either.
All right. Anything else on this item? Mr. Mayor, I think if there are no other specific input, I would ask that our city attorney to share some recent development that we were made aware of just recently. If, Adam, if you're on the phone, could you please elaborate on this most recent discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Ampar. Yes. We'd like to make the suggestion that the council consider adding an item to its agenda before you adjourn this evening, and that is because while the council will recall that at a few meetings ago, there was discussion about the general issue at the end of the meeting about potentially having a future item about the county's expenditures of its CARES Act funding. The, and following that, I am the city manager, and I and staff all began tracking those issues and attending to and gathering information about that, the county's expenditures of those funds, out of the $181 million that they were appropriated federally, as well as the state funding. But it came to our attention over the weekend, after the agenda was posted, that there is a group of mayors who are working on this topic, and that there is a possibility that their work could result in an action or a letter or some other step in this regard this week before your next regular council meeting. So the request here this evening is to add an agenda item now to consider possible directions to staff, including the approval of the letter from the city council regarding the county's spending of its CARES Act funding and the potential reallocation of that. And if you would add that, we would appreciate your authorization to respond potentially with the city's own letter in order to support and facilitate the efforts of your colleague mayors in our community.
Adam, does a, does a emergency amendment to the agenda require a two-thirds vote?
It does, and I understand that we have one of your colleagues who has left the meeting, so you would need two-thirds of the remaining four members.
Okay.
I will, we'll add this item to the agenda as an emergency item, came to the attention of the staff after the agenda had closed.
Can I ask that point?
It is something, and that's, sure, sure, may I just add, may I add a second item? And it is also, the second required finding is that it is an item that requires attention before the next meeting, because the city's potential response here would, would potentially complement or assist the efforts and coordinate with the efforts of your colleagues who are about to comment on this issue.
Adam, so I, just a quick question. The two-thirds threshold is usually of the voting body, not the members present. Are you saying that it's two-thirds of, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to know that, but is it two-thirds of the members present, or it's two-thirds of the?
If you have less than two-thirds of the members present, it's, it's the two-thirds of the full body, so if, if, if there were three of you present, it would be all three.
Okay.
If I'm three to four, I'm sure you would do it.
Okay, thank you.
Turn your role.
Motion made. Was there a second, or may have lost that?
I'll second it, if you don't have one.
Seconded by Terry. A roll call, please, for an emergency amendment to the agenda.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yeah.
Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have created item 17.4 regarding Sacramento County CARES Act funding as an emergency amendment to the agenda. Adam, do you want to?
Yes, yes, sure, just a few, a few additional sentences. So as, as you all know, Sacramento County was awarded these funds, and there has been significant recent public attention at their choices and spending it and whether or not they have been spending it the way they've appropriated those funds most directly to public health, rather, public health issues, and also to economic development and small business issues. And when we learned of the possible action by your colleagues on this subject, we wanted to expedite the attention that the city manager and I have been paying to this issue, and bring a letter to you that we thought would reflect your views on the subject in order for you to support, to both express yourself and also to support the regional interest in this topic. So we have placed a letter before you that we hope and think would reflect your views on this. Mr. Ampar, do you have any comments on our efforts? And we would be requesting that you consider adoption of the letter, and that the council will direct it at the Board of Supervisors.
No, Adam, I have no further comments to make. I just want to highlight that there is, we believe there is a sense of urgency related to this topic. We need to, we need to, that's, that's why we believe that this letter has, has to be considered by the council tonight and a decision be made tonight.
Adam, this is the city clerk. Do you want us to put that letter on the screen?
Yes, you're welcome to, yes, please. And we do have copies of that available for any members in the public who are in attendance.
Cyrus, I guess I would add, several of us did experience a great concern during our conference comments, I think at the last break of the meeting of the city council, on this topic. I have watched all of the county hearings on this topic that are available, there's not, not many since, since March. They've only taken it up a couple of times, handful of times, CARES Act funding or the, or the epidemic, pandemic. So I appreciate you doing this work on this and following up. I think it was, Mr. Terry, and I think Linda, you may have commented as well, several of us made comments.
Well, I sure did, I remember that.
Yeah. I know I, at that point, I said I need more information, but what I'm hearing is accurate, I'm very disturbed. And, well, now I have more information.
I'm still very disturbed.
Pretty darn, yeah, very disturbed.
Are we ready for a motion?
I mean, the council, unless the council's further deliberation, the motion would be to direct the council to approve this letter substantially in a form in which it's in front of you, and we would have it available for signature by the full council tomorrow to be sent to the Board of Supervisors.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Anyone wish any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, we can go to a roll call vote. I assume we have no public comment that's dropped up, Stacey?
There is no public-
On our emergency item?
On the emergency, oh, someone could be watching and raise their hand.
There is no public comment.
That's the beauty of this system. All right.
Uh, Councilmember Terry. Councilmember Terry?
I-
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yeah.
Mayor Sander?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, that was item 17.4. We are moving on to item 18, council request for future agenda items. We've got one with regard to work on a discussion in our response to the pandemic. Obviously, that'll potentially be a regular item. Anything else? Seeing none, we're going to move on to adjournments. We are going to adjourn tonight in the memory of two individuals. Sandy Klemekki, who made a lot of contributions during her life here in Ranch of Cordova to our community in leadership positions and in other roles, as a business person, as Linda so eloquently said earlier. Thank you for that, Linda. It's a, it's a sad loss to see one of our older statesmen, statespeople from Ranch of Cordova pass on, but we are grateful and, and sort of humbled by their contributions. We also want to acknowledge the, the mother of one of our own, and this is Albert Stricker's mother, who, as I understand, had passed away after a short illness last week. We recognized Albert earlier tonight for his dedication to the city. He is an outstanding employee here at Ranch of Cordova, and we all know his mother must have been exceedingly proud of his, of his success here, as we all are proud of his success here. Her name was Jeanette Roberts, Albert Stricker's mother, she passed away last week. So I intend to adjourn in the memory of both those individuals, Jeanette Roberts and Sandy Klemekki. With nothing else, we are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.